Good evening and welcome to the Foxborough Board of Appeals January 18, 2024 meeting. This meeting and the hearings that we will be considering is being broadcast and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. The time being 7:00 PM. An appeal by Francis J. Spillane pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision dated December 5, 2023 from the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer stating that a proposed 5,000-square-foot commercial building for the property located at 5-7 Turner Road would create a new nonconformity and would require variance from the Board of Appeals. Property is located in the S1 Special Use District and the Water Resource Protection Overlay District.
Good evening. Attorney Frank Spillane, I'm also the applicant. The owner is here with me this evening.
Eugene Konsevsky, my name.
Frank, typically what I would do would start off with the building commissioner.
Yep.
And he's not here, obviously.
Correct.
He's enjoying the warmer weather in Aruba. But I did ask him to send us something in writing relative to his position, so I'm going to ask him to read that.
Memorandum to the Board of Appeals from Scott Shippey Building Commissioner, date of January 2, 2024, subject 5-7 Turner Road zoning determination. In reference to the above referenced property, I have reviewed the appeal application of my determination that only a special permit from the planning board is required for the proposed commercial building. The property is located within the S1 and Water Resource Protection District Zone 3. The lot contains 40,005 square feet of area and 206 feet of frontage. There is a preexisting two-family dwelling located on the lot as well. I agree with Attorney Spillane that both existing lot and the current two-family residential use are of preexisting nonconforming status. I disagree with Attorney Spillane that only a special permit will be required for the addition of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building. Section 4.1.4 and 4.1.5 specifically speak about two separate uses. Chapter 275 does not reference for two separate primary uses to be allowed on a single nonconforming lot. It is my opinion that the addition of a separate commercial property that is not accessory to the preexisting nonconforming two-family use would be creating a new nonconformity, therefore needing a variance from the Board of Appeals along with the special permit from the planning board.
Again, the application is an appeal of the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer's determination in his letter dated December 5, 2023 that said, you know, our proposed 5,000-square-foot commercial building, we're proposing at 5-7 Turner Road would create a new nonconformity and would require variance from this board. And the property is at 5-7 Turner Road, which is Route 115 off of Pear Street, which is Route 140 and is in the S1 zoning district. As was stated, the lot contains 40,005 square feet of area, 206 feet of frontage, and a lot width of 141 feet. Lot is therefore preexisting nonconforming for area. The S1 district, you need 80,000 square feet unless you get a special permit from the planning board, and a lot width of 200 feet is required. As previously stated, there's a two-family dwelling located on that lot, which was built around 1965. The structure is preexisting nonconforming because the front yard setback is 34 feet and 50 feet is required in that zone. The use as a two-family is also preexisting nonconforming because the use is not a permitted use within the S1 zoning district. I sent a letter to the building commissioner dated November 27, 2023, excuse me, describing our proposed 5,000-square-foot commercial building on the property, which is in allowed use within the S1 zoning district under use group D1, and stating that the building will meet all setbacks and other zoning requirements under the bylaw. Mr. Shippey sent me a letter dated December 5, 2023, making his determination that a new nonconformity would be created and a variance would be required, and that's what we were appealing here. Also in that memorandum dated January 2, 2024 to this board, he stated that Sections 4.1.4 and 4.1.5 specifically speak to two separate uses and that Chapter 275 does not reference for two separate primary uses to be allowed on a single lot. Sections 414 and 415 do not speak to uses. The word use or uses does not appear in the language in those sections. Those sections speak to the number of structures or buildings allowed on the lot. Sections 414 specifically says one dwelling per lot. Only one dwelling structure shall be located on a lot unless otherwise expressly permitted by these bylaws. And the way that's always been interpreted is that one residential dwelling can be on a lot. Section 415 nonresidential buildings state two or more nonresidential buildings may be located on a lot, provided that each building conforms to the dimensional intensity requirements of the bylaw. The lot shall meet minimum frontage requirements. Again, that specifically talks about nonresidential buildings. 414 just says one dwelling structure, but it's always been interpreted as one residential dwelling structure, otherwise there could be some conflict between the two. Again, 414 states only one dwelling structure, residential can be located in a lot. 415 states two or more nonresidential buildings can be located on a lot. Neither of these sections or Chapter 275 prohibit a residential dwelling and a commercial building being on the same lot. It does not disallow more than one use on a lot. The use is permitted or not permitted. Primary is never really used in the bylaws except in definitions. Former Foxborough Building Commissioner and zoning officer William Casparra came to our determination back in 2005. I sent him a similar letter describing a proposed project at 119 Green Street, which is within the limited industrial zone. And in his letter, again, to me, dated January 11, 2005, he advised that the single-family dwelling, which was located on the property, would not need a finding to remain on the property on which a commercial building was proposed to be built. Again, no new, no new nonconformities were created and variance was not required to be constructed on the commercial property. Again, that was at 119 Green Street. There was a single-family dwelling on that lot. What was being proposed was a building for a hair salon and possibly other allowed uses. So that was an allowed use. No finding or variances were required from this board at that time. We went in front of the planning board and got site plan review at that time, and a commercial structure was built on that property. Subsequently after that, eventually, that single-family dwelling was converted to commercial, but was always known that if it was ever converted to commercial, it could not convert back to residential, to nonallowed use. Again, in his letter to me dated January 11, 2005, he states that the current residential use of the property is considered preexisting nonconforming. A finding is not required if the residence remains a single-family dwelling or is converted to an allowed use in its entirety pursuant to Section 1101A. However, the structure is converted to an allowed use and may not revert back to the single-family dwelling. So again, at that time, it was interpreted that you could have a residence that was on a lot in a commercial zone continue to exist on a lot and a commercial building be built. The language back in 2005 is identical to the language today in our bylaw. Then again, in 2014, site plan review was granted to Red Snapper Realty Trust at 3545 Pannis Road for the construction of two new commercial buildings on that lot, again, within the limited industrial zoning district. That lot contained a single-family dwelling on that lot, that lot at that time. Because of the history from 2005, and we still went forward, you know, met with the building commissioner and the planners, they all agreed that, yes, you can do it with a single-family dwelling on it. They got approval for the construction of those two buildings. Eventually, I think one of those buildings was converted, was modified to two buildings, so there are a number of buildings on there. Eventually, that property was subdivided into three lots. One was for the residential unit, one was for one of the buildings, one was for, I believe, two of the buildings. But again, at the outset, it was one lot with a residential unit on it, and two commercial buildings were built on it. And the interpretation was, at that time, that you could do that. So again, under prior precedent, the Town of Foxborough has determined that a lot in a commercial zone with a preexisting nonconforming residential use could construct a commercial building on the lot without creating a new nonconformity and no variance would be required. Because again, in reading the zoning, you can have one dwelling unit on a lot. That's what we have. You can have two or more nonresidential buildings on a lot. So we're not in conflict, conflicted with either of those. So again, the plain language of the bylaw does allow one dwelling lot on a lot, and two or more commercial buildings are allowed on the lot. Again, he talks about two primary uses on a lot. Two uses are allowed on a lot. You can have commercial with retail in different zones. You can have residential with retail. So you can have more than one use. It's whether the use is allowed or permitted, or not allowed or permitted. And some are permitted by right, some are permitted by special permit, and again, others are not allowed at all in certain zones. And that's, so, Chapter 275 does not reference two separate primary uses at all, not being allowed on a lot. So again, one dwelling structure can be on a lot with two nonresidential buildings if it's allowed. So again, this building we're proposing isn't allowed in that, and the use is allowed. The existing two-family structure is a preexisting nonconforming use, but it is allowed because it's preexisting. It's at one point in time, it was an allowed use, and therefore it has that protection. And again, I asked for an explanation of what the nonconformity is that we're running into, and I've never got that. So if we come to that, you know, I'd just like an opportunity to address the nonconformity because I don't understand what the nonconformity is that we're running into. But again, there's at least two, there may be more that I've never, wasn't involved in where this has occurred and it's been read that this is allowed. So we just ask a determination that the building commissioner's determination is reversed and that we can move forward.
So again, just to be clear, what you're saying is because the zoning bylaw does not prohibit residential and commercial uses on the same lot, it's permitted?
That's how it's been interpreted, and that's how it's been read previously by past building commissioner and past planners and the planning board.
Okay. Kim, questions?
Could you describe the 5,000-square-foot commercial building, please?
It's going to be a contractor's building with four 25-by-50-foot bays.
Trades.
I'm sorry?
For the trades, I mean.
For the trades.
Trades, plumbers, electricians, something like that.
So it's for the trades, it's contractors.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Sorry, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding you.
Basically, it's for the trade, like a contractor building kind of thing.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have a list of materials and so forth? I mean, I think that's what she might have been asking, like, what's it going to look like, the building?
I'm sorry?
The building itself, like, the materials that it's going to be built out of?
Oh, we haven't gotten that far. That'd be something that we'd have to bring to the planning board. We just had a rough plan done. You know, I wanted to meet with Scott. Because back in 2005, I met with Bill Casparra initially when I came to my conclusion. I wanted to make sure he agreed with me that we could do it down there. And again, he responded, you know, I met, he said, yep. I wrote him a letter outlining everything. He responded saying, yes, you can do it back there. I was doing the same thing here. So other than, other than a rough, and I can show you the plan showing where it is, you know, definitive drawings have not been done.
Okay.
Yes, we did a land survey, and yeah, we actually had a little drawing there to see if it's, if it meets all the setbacks and everything, and it does.
Can you move the microphones closer to you?
There was a conceptual plan.
Move the microphones closer.
Yeah. So we'd have to go in front of the planning board for a special permit because down in that area, if in the S1 district, if more than 15% of the lot is impervious, becomes impervious, you have to go for a special permit. And part of the special permit application is site plan. So we'll have to go through that all with the planning board.
Right, understood. Just to follow up with Kim's question, and I think this is what you're trying to get, is what activities are going to be conducted within the building itself? And I realize that's the planning board's issue, but just out of curiosity.
Yes, I'm just looking to really understand the use. Would it be you using this? Would these be something you rent out to people?
I think it's going to be oriented out, basically, because, you know, like, we do a planning to do pretty much the same kind of building on the Newport Avenue in Attleboro, and right now it goes in the process, basically. I mean, we got all the approvals and everything, it's already, we're already working on the building pyramid there, so anyway. This is what, I mean, I have a company myself, so we're planning to be there. But this one, more likely, it's going to be rented out, yeah, and to the trade people, like electrician or maybe plumber, something like that. No, like, I mean, there's no retail or anything like that.
And how many different people would you anticipate renting it out to?
I don't know, probably going to be, I mean, 5,000.
Right now, there are four bays.
Four bays, I guess.
So anticipation would be four.
Okay.
But again, you know, sometime in the future, one bay could be subdivided, you know, we'd have to go through the approvals for that. But right now, it's planned to be four, four bays.
So the tradesmen will mostly be keeping equipment there, supplies, as opposed to actually doing anything within the building itself, or it could be both?
I think it could be both, I guess. I mean, I don't think, I mean, as long as we meet all the requirements, not to leave the stuff outside and all that kind of stuff, I mean, we just filter the tenants and, you know, there's going to be some rules, basically. And just so, I mean, they're using as many parking lots as they allow and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I already have some rental property, so I know how it's, like, you have to, how you have to handle all that and manage all that, so.
Okay. Again, that's the planning board concern.
Yes.
Lorraine? I'm sorry, unless you have more?
Nope. All right then.
Are there any questions?
Not anymore, no.
Eric, do you have any questions?
No, I was, Kim asked the same question as I had, first my own edification. Thanks.
Okay. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? You're going to have to go over there, and you'll have to tell us your name and address.
My name is Steve Vaszkowski.
Could you spell that, please?
Yep. B as in boy, A C Z K O W S K I. The address, I own the property at 32 Pine Street.
Okay.
32 Pine Street, 34 Pine Street is the same type of unit, residential unit that's on...
Actually, can you, your arm's in front of a microphone. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's directly behind, you know, the proposed building. I'm a little concerned, the building is, proposed building is 5,000 square feet, but all the residential units in that area are maybe 1,800 feet. This would be, this building would be directly between 35 Pear Street and 32-34 Pine Street. It would be directly between us.
Mm-hmm.
We've already dealt with residents next door. They created a lot for Patriot Parking shortly, just a little bit further down the street from 3 and 5, is 1 and 2. They removed all the trees from that lot. Now we have a clear view of the billboards on Route 1, a clear view of the bridges on Route 1, and all the traffic on Route 1. I'd be more concerned, or have additional concern if more trees were removed at 3 and 5. I'd be concerned, contractors, trucks, noises. We have to deal already with the industrial park across the street, dumpsters, early morning hours, a lot of noise, a lot of traffic. So these are just some of the, some of the concerns that I have if this was constructed on that property, on this residential property. It's really, these are residential properties. It may be zoned special, but they're currently all residential properties. Just, I take that into consideration, I guess.
That's not really our consideration.
Okay.
I'll talk a little bit more about what our specific consideration is shortly, but as Mr. Spillane indicated, they ultimately will need a special permit from the planning board to go forward with this, with this project. So the issues that you've raised would be more in gear to what the planning board would want to hear and be more applicable to what they would be considering than the specific issue that we have to determine.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not saying they are legitimate issues. There are certainly legitimate concerns that the planning board would want to hear. But at some point in time, there'll be a request for a special permit to the planning board, and that would be the appropriate time to, to raise these kinds of issues.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Move to close the public hearing?
Move that we close the public portion of the hearing.
Second?
I'm going to have to do this by roll call, okay? So Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So there are really two, two issues here. First, I totally disagree with you that silence in the bylaw relative to a specific matter translate into that thing being permitted. In other words, what you're saying is because the bylaw does not address the issue of residential and commercial on the same property, it's a permissible use. I would take the opposite position, that it's not a permissible use. Recognize and acknowledge what the planning board did with respect to site plan, and I recognize and acknowledge what, you know, Bill Casparra said. Ironically, I had lunch with Bill last week, and we were talking about different zoning issues, and when I mentioned this to him, he said, no, no, he can't have the same thing on the same lot. So I'm going to have to have, I'm going to have to get him to straighten out his, his ideas at some point. But ultimately, when it comes time to interpret and construe the bylaw, it's our responsibility. The fact that we're here is reflective of that because, obviously, Mr. Shippey issued a determination, and you appealed, and it's up to us to make that final call on that unless, of course, there's an appeal to the courts. So I disagree with you on that, and I want to hear the board on that before I get to the issue of, really, the substance of your appeal, which I think is the variance.
Can I just address that?
Yeah, why not? You're here.
My question to you, then, would be, where in the bylaw does it say you can't?
It doesn't say either. So my, my position would be because it's not addressed, it's not permitted, that, and I, you know, go by analogy to the table of uses. The only uses that are permitted are the ones that are specifically set forth in the table. So this is analogous to it.
In a specific zone, those are allowed uses.
Right. But let's just take a hypothetical. As far as I can remember, there's nothing about an airport in the, in the table of uses.
No, that's different. The table of uses says that if it's not...
No, again, I'm saying by analogy.
Okay. That if it's not listed, it's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
So it specifically says that. If it's not listed, it's not allowed.
But no way does the bylaw say if something is not addressed specifically or explicitly, is it allowed?
Well, it says that a, one dwelling unit is allowed on a lot, residential dwelling, and two or more commercial allowed on a lot. So we're not in conflict with that. The use we're proposing is an allowed use. The use that is there...
Is allowed.
Is allowed. So we're not in conflict with anything. See what I'm saying?
Again, we're disagreeing, okay? I understand that. You know, again, my opinion is that if something is not explicitly stated, you can't say that it's permitted. I'm not saying it's prohibited, but it's just not permitted.
I don't see the difference, but okay.
Well, it's a distinction without a difference, perhaps, but, or a difference without a distinction, but one or the other.
Barney, if, oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead if you're going to say something.
No, go ahead.
I was just looking for a clarification. Attorney Spillane, correct me if I'm misinterpreting your position. You're saying that you can have one dwelling, so residential dwelling in this case, and then two, and then you can have two nonresidential buildings, so total of three? Is that where your position is?
The bylaw says you could have two or more nonresidential structures on a lot. So you could, in theory, have 10.
Okay.
Nonresidential structures on a lot. But on any, on any one lot, you can only have one dwelling. Now, you only can have dwellings, residential dwellings, in certain zones. The zone that we're in, and this is only where it can really occur, the zone that we're in, residences, multifamilies, anything like that, is not allowed use. However, the two-family was constructed at a time when it was probably a different zone or wasn't allowed, so it's a preexisting nonconforming use. So that use on that lot is an allowed use. So that is an allowed use. And by putting a residential, a nonresidential structure on there, where we're meeting all the setbacks and all that, we're still conforming to everything. For example, if he wanted to convert, and there's no plans of this, though, the current building to some sort of an allowed use there, commercial-wise, he could, and then he could also put this proposed building on it, because you're going to have two, more than two. So the only places you could have, in theory, a residence and a commercial, I'm sure I'm missing one, but is in the situation that we've run into, where there's a residence on a commercial lot. Of course, whenever the residence was put there, it was probably either prior to zoning or a time where it was zoned for residences, and it was then later changed to a commercial. So now you have a preexisting nonconforming use there, and that is an allowed use there.
Yep. Now, thank you, I appreciate that. And I think you did a good job of explaining it in your written submission as well as here tonight. And then Barney, just to clarify, you're stating that they're not read together, meaning that you can have a dwelling plus two or more nonresidential buildings? It doesn't say you can or cannot do that, but you're interpreting that to state that because there is a dwelling there, you cannot just now add as many nonresidential... as many non-residential buildings to that lot?
No, what I'm saying is because the bylaw does not specifically say that you can have a residential and a commercial on the same lot, that doesn't mean it's permitted.
Right.
Again, there's no way you can point where it says it's not permitted or even interpret it. And it's been interpreted previously, you know, by the building commissioner, by the planning board, by the planner, that it is.
We're not bound by their prior interpretations as far as, as this goes, as far as, you know, how the bylaws to be interpreted.
But it is an indication of how-
At that time.
It has been interpreted. And it's a reasonable interpretation. Because again, the, the planning board, the planner, the building commissioner, it's not like this was done, you know, and it just slid through. I specifically wrote a letter to the building commissioner, laying it all out. We have a residential unit here. We want to put a commercial building on it. Is that okay? And it came back, yes. And we went in front of the planning board. They could have come over, they could have said, you know, "This isn't right." And they didn't. And then it came up a second time with regard to, it, there might have been other times that I just wasn't involved in. But that is an indication. I think it's a strong indication of how it is interpreted.
Okay. Lorraine?
So, you know, I read Frank's information and, and Scott's letter and, you know, I guess I'm seeing we're starting off with a pre-existing, non-conforming situation. And then I'm asking the question to myself, or you and Kim, to discuss. Adding another building to that already pre-existing, non-conforming lot, doesn't that make it more non-conforming?
My question to that is how so? Because what we're putting there is an allowed use, allowed building. That's gonna conform to all the setbacks.
I, I think that's what Scott was saying.
It's like, it's non-conforming because of that one building that's on it and, you know, the requirements of that location for lot size and frontage already. So it's, it's non-conforming. So another thing added to it would just make it more non-conforming.
Well, it's, it's-
Whether it would be another, well, you're not allowed to have two residentials, but you know what I mean?
The lot is grandfathered. So let's say this was a vacant land. It's grandfathered, so you could put a building in there.
There is one.
It doesn't say it's pre-existing, non-conforming. It's a grandfathered lot. So if that was a vacant land, you could put this proposed or any kind of structure you wanted there for commercial allowed uses. It's a grandfathered lot. It's pre-existing, non-conforming because there's a structure there. Now, the structure is non-conforming because it's just a little too close to the, um, um, front yard. You know, it was built in 65, you know, many of them were built close to the road back then. But the, the lot itself is grandfathered. So again, if it was vacant, we could put a, put a, um, a building on it.
I do see what you're saying, though, Lorraine. There is a building on it right now.
Already.
And so is this increasing the non-conformity?
Right. That's what I'm envisioning, that's what's happening.
And, and you're not, you know, especially with the lot size because the lot's not changing. The non-conformity is the existing house, and we're not changing that. If you want to touch the non-formal use, we're not changing that. The, the structure's not changing at all. And actually, in Bill's, you know, letter in 2005, you know, he says, you know, "You can't touch that structure while going in front of the Board of Appeals." And it wasn't, you know, it was just cosmetic work that was done on the house. And, and we understood that and knew that. But this is a, you know, the, the lot is grandfathered. So if there was nothing on there, we could build on it. If this, if he converts that house into a commercial, you know, offices or something like that, some use that's allowed, he could put a second commercial property on there.
Yeah, or if we can ground it up, basically, then the lot is there and it's S1 and we can build, basically, without even asking anything.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I understand a lot of these questions because when I went to see Bill in 2005, you know, I came to my determination, but I wouldn't say I was 100% sure, you know? I met with Bill, we went through it, and he said yes. And we went through. And reading it.
No other questions?
Okay.
So the other, I really think the positive issue is, you know, again, Scott said a variance was required. I've taken the position that the variance that Scott is talking about was a use variance. And I asked him if that's what he had in mind, and he said, "Yes, it's a use variance." We can't grant the use variance.
But how can it be a use variance when it's an allowed use?
Because, because what Scott is saying is that the property could not be used for a residential and a commercial purpose at the same time. It's certainly not a dimensional variance because we don't have any, we don't have any authority to grant variances for properties in the special use district.
No, I understand that, there's no use variances, you know?
So this is, you know, again, what, what Scott was saying, and I, and I, and I asked him about this because this was what, what I was thinking, that he was thinking, is that we're dealing with the use of the property, the manner in which the property is being used. So even though the uses themselves are permissible, he was looking at it as a use variance. And, and again, we don't have the authority to grant the use variance.
I agree with that, yeah.
So.
So, but what, you know, I don't know how you guys are gonna vote, but-
Maybe you should not say anything. I'm going in your direction. Kim, any thoughts, questions?
I'm processing, not this, not at the second.
Lorraine? Kurt?
No.
Eric?
No.
Tell me when you're done processing.
All right, so, so Scott is saying what's required is a use variance, but we can't grant a use variance. That's what we're coming down to.
Mm-hmm. Bylaw explicitly prohibits that.
Okay. So where does that leave us?
Well, again, Frank's appeal was, is that a variance is not required, correct?
A determination that we need, that there's-
Yeah, again, Scott's determination was that we're creating, that you're creating a new non-conformity and therefore a variance is required.
So my bill is there's no non-conformity and we don't need a variance, yeah.
So what, what I'm saying is that we're not talking about a specific use, we're talking about the use of the property. So therefore, what we're talking about is a use variance. There's nothing here that, that deals with dimensions.
Right. So if it's not a dimensional variance, then-
We can't grant a use variance.
Then where does that leave us?
Well-
In a puzzle.
No, not in a puzzle.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Kurt?
Well, we can't grant something that we can't grant.
Correct. It's as simple as it gets. Eric?
Hmm. I don't want to keep talking in circles, so no, I don't have anything to add.
Well, let, let, let me do this then. Let me suggest the motion. Maybe I'll make it a little bit clearer. And, and the motion is to reverse the December 5, 2023 determination of Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer Scott Shippey, requiring a variance from the board as a condition to the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building on the property situated at 5-7 Turner Road as requested by the application of Francis J. Spillane. You know, again, as, as we've done before, you know, framing it in, in that fashion as we've been told by, by town council. So a, a roll call vote of yes would be to reverse Scott's decision. And therefore say that a variance is not required. And a vote of no would be to say that a variance is required. And again, we have no authority to grant a variance. So gets you basically where you want to be, even if I don't agree with you as to how you get there. And, and as I said, I, I did speak with Scott before he left on vacation just to confirm that was what his thinking was. And, and he said yes. It can't be a, it can't be a variance relative to dimensions. And, and even if it was, the bylaw says that in properties in the S1 district, the planning board can basically vary by special permit. So we, we don't even have authority to grant a, a dimensional variance as far as properties in the S1, whether it's front yard, side yard, rear yard, frontage, or, or lot size.
Okay, so you're saying a motion to reverse Scott's determination. A yes says that the variance is not required, and no means a variance-
Is required.
Is required.
And, and again, we, we don't have authority-
But we can't- but we can't grant the variance.
Yes, that's correct. The bylaw prohibits it.
Right, because we're talking about a use variant, and so we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to do that.
So voting yes would take care of the fact that we don't have the authority to do that.
Well, it's reflective of the fact that we don't, yeah. Which, which means that next step is for you to go to the special permit route without-
With the plan.
Us having to consider a variance. Because we can't.
Right.
Special use with the planning board, is that what you're stating, Barney?
I'm sorry?
The next step would, sorry, you mentioned special use permit. Would that be with the planning board?
No, the, because more than 15% of the property, or 2,500 square feet, whatever it might be, is, would be impervious by the construction of the proposed building. A special permit from the planning board is required.
Right, okay.
So essentially what Scott had said to, to Frank was, "Yes, you've got to go the special permit route. These are the dimensions of the property." But I believe, I, meaning Scott, believe that a variance is required from the ZBA. And as I said when I spoke with him before he went on vacation, and just confirmed that that's what he was thinking, he said, "Yeah, you're right. Can't grant a use variance." So this has been an interesting academic exercise, but-
Would you like a motion?
Sure. You want to read it again, or you all said?
Yes, if you don't mind reading it.
Okay. To reverse the December 5, 2023 determination of Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer Scott Shippey, requiring a variance from the board as a condition to the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building on the property situated at 5-7 Turner Road as requested by the application of Francis J. Spillane.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the roll call, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And, and again, there, I don't know when, but they'll be filing for a special permit and the issues that you raised would be type of things that the planning board, you know, would need to consider in here. You're at Butters, correct?
Butters, right, yes.
Yeah, I'm the owner of the 9/11 too, basically, so I kind of like, I've bothered them, so just, uh, I know the, I know the head of it a little bit.
Okay, the time being 7:10 PM. We have the continued appeal by Jay Cook Realty LLC pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision dated February 22, 2023 from the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer stating unlawful storage at 24 East Belcher Road is a violation of Chapter 275 zoning, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use 3.1.64, Junkyard, comma, Order Graveyard. The property is located in the Limited Industrial District and the Water Resource Protection District. Oh, I'm sorry, Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So just to recap, we've been at this for a long time.
Correct.
The initial enforcement order was, I think it was in February. And Mr. Cook filed the appeal in March. Our initial hearing was in April. We did a site walk on May 4th. Continued the matter to May 18th and to June 29th, again to September 21, and again to December 21. And then we did a site walk on the 4th of January. And as the board recalls, the reason we've been continuing this was the hope that the property could be cleaned up to Mr. Shippey's and our satisfaction. One of my concerns in that regard was trying to avoid going to court on, on an appeal and having the matter sit in court. The reason we wanted to do a site walk in January was just to see where things were because we had not been led to believe that there was sufficient, you know, progress being made. And my reaction was there's been some progress. You know, I was pleased to see that the bikes are not there. Not gonna say where they are, but there's been some progress, but you know, frankly, I don't think there's been a lot of progress. If I were going out there for the first time, I would think I would have agreed with what I saw the first time, you know, way back in May, that it's, it's a junkyard. So obviously want to hear from my colleagues to see what their reactions were. I'd be really interested in hearing Eric's reaction because he was out there for the first time. And then make a decision as to what we want to, you know, to do next. Whoever wants to start?
I do have a list of some of the items that have been removed since the site walk-
Okay.
Which I'd like to submit.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
So these have been removed since the 4th?
Correct.
Moved since, yes.
Yes, since the site walk. Removed off the site, out of Foxborough, not coming back.
Okay.
Who wants to start? Go ahead.
I do appreciate that there has been progress. A little bit more space as we were walking around, I really had hoped for more. That's all I have to say.
You ready?
I agree with what Kim said, it definitely looks like, you know, it's been organized, but there's still... There were some changes, you know, again, in terms of open space, but I think it's still a lot of junk there.
Kurt?
I mean, I'm sympathetic to the fact that it's really difficult to move all that stuff. I understand that, you know, it's not... Yeah, it's, you know, again, I'm sympathetic to the fact that it's hard to move all of that stuff. It's not easy, I understand, it's a lot of stuff there. But I didn't see a lot of progress. I was expecting more.
Eric, you were out there for the first time, what was your sort of gut reaction when you saw the property?
It's definitely a large undertaking, based on what I saw, and that was the first time I was there, I wasn't there the first site visit. So, I agree with Kurt, that's quite the undertaking. Seems like a lot of work. So, my, I thought is, as far as kind of a standard to apply to this, would be, has there been a reasonable, good faith effort to make progress to this point? Again, I didn't see what it was like before this recent site visit, so that's my opinion on how to approach this going forward, and I guess I'll ultimately defer to you guys as the ones that saw it from the beginning.
Kim, you want to start? Want to respond to that?
I think that is, Eric, I do appreciate what you said, a reasonable, good faith effort, and I certainly think that efforts have been made, is my opinion, not everyone agrees necessarily, but I do think an effort has been made, and I also know that we had, I believe, said that we would go until March, right? And so, I'm very curious to see what could be accomplished between now and the March meeting. If there's a continuation, if we can sort of have this go forward with anticipation of a good faith, or continuation of a good faith effort, I'd be very curious to see what would happen by March.
Ryan?
I mean, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, you know, this list, these are some significant items that were removed since the last time. We could see, you know, if there's any more significant progress in another couple of months. Given the difficulty of, you know, what the task is.
Kurt?
Well, if the idea is to, you know, see where we are in March, and if there's a good faith effort, then let's see if there is a good faith effort, right? I mean, if the goal of this whole thing is, all of the stuff is going to be removed, is that the end goal?
Well, the end goal... I mean, obviously, a lot of the items on the property, items that are used in the business. And anything that's legitimately utilized in the business needs to be there, and that's not what I would consider to be junk. You know, the rusted vehicle that we saw, that's been sitting there, the old steam train engine...
No, I guess what my question is, is I know that there's like a business side of the property, and then there's the side in question. Is the side that's not related to the business, is the idea to remove, you know, everything from that site and make it pastoral? I mean, I'm trying to understand, like, what is the, what is the, what are we trying to accomplish at the end of this process?
So, if I can address that from Mr. Cook's perspective, that is going to be a site plan review for a continued commercial operation of that, essentially as sort of a contractor yard, where trailers and trucks will be parked and utilized and equipment, but subject to the site review process, which means that the site will be evaluated, there'll be discussion of buffering, et cetera. I'm sure the planning board will condition it on not accumulation of inoperable parts and things like that, but it's definitely not going to be pastoral, it's going to be a commercial use. I mean, this is stuff that the town needs, you know, again, he tows trucks, he moves people's equipment, he needs to continue...
I'm with you then, and that, well, I guess what I mean is, before you go to that site plan review, what condition does that site have to be in?
So, I would think that we have to make you happy during this process in terms of what is there and what has been removed, but I would say that at the time the filing for site plan review is made, there are going to be usable trailers, there are going to be usable storage containers, there's going to be usable trucks and things like that still located at the site. These things, you know, it's, we don't want to move it someplace where it can't go. I was in court today on another matter where there was an order of the court a year and a half ago to get stuff cleaned up, and, you know, all parties acknowledge it's very difficult, expensive, time-consuming to move things. I think the best way for the town, you know, from our perspective, obviously, it seems a little self-serving, but to continue to work with you rather than put this in court is the best way to make solid progress. And it is, it's a daunting task, it took a long time to accumulate it, takes a long time to get rid of it, you know, and he's running his business, he's responding to emergencies, he is making a good faith effort, it's in his own long-term best interest. It's frustrating, it's difficult, there is a lot of stuff there, you know, first, you know, you've got to drain the swamp, then kill the alligators, he's got to, you know, stop taking new stuff on that doesn't have an end use and an end game, which he has done. He's getting his people that are leaving stuff there to come and get it, hopefully that all gets moved out of Foxborough, it's out of Jeff's control, you know, this is a complicated thing, as, you know, density and growth and things happen, there are fewer and fewer places to put this stuff. So, finding places to put it is difficult, you know, scrap markets aren't great, you know, but he's working on it and he will continue to work on it. He's not trying to do it in a manner that appeals visually to you, he's trying to do it in a way that makes sense in terms of getting stuff, and he's not hiding stuff in the woods, he's not stacking stuff in a clever way or anything, he's just trying to get it out of there. And we, I totally understand, the chronology of this does not look good on paper when you unwind it and look at all the steps we've gone through, I still think that continuing to work closely together is the best way to try to solve this problem.
Where are you in the site plan process?
He's working with Bay Colony, I'm actually not particularly involved in that at this point, but he's retained Bay Colony, I think they're working on approaches, Billy did say he had, he's never been as busy as he is now, and he has several jobs, many jobs in front of this. I think he has decent plans to work from as, you know, conceptually, but it requires survey, you know, and topo and all of that stuff, so that's going to take a while. I don't, I can't tell you that we will be filed or have sketches by March either. I mean, you know, telling, it's a difficult, drawn-out process. He's making a good effort. You may not think it's good enough, but in his life, in his business, he is really quite stressed out about doing this and trying to comply. There's a lot of moving parts to this.
So, is the focus on getting stuff moved off the site that is like, like permanently inoperable or that kind of thing, is that...
I think that's fair to say, yeah. Things like tires, things that are in containers, things, parts, and one of the things, two site visits ago, he had removed a large stack of truck rear ends, you know, rear axles and stuff, and got rid of those. You know, that's the stuff that he's moving off-site. He's got to get rid of some of those old cars and things like that. You know, the heavy metal, every one of those has to be put on a trailer and moved somewhere that is appropriate for it and can be disposed of, which takes time from other work and things like that, so... You know, again, that is an industry that is facing a series of external stresses, you know, we don't understand it as laypeople, but it's sort of a necessary part of the economy. You know, this one is a little over and above, and he's working on bringing it into scale. If we end up in court, unfortunately, that just slows things down and, you know, I just don't know if that's the best way to solve this issue. I mean, from the perspective of the public, it's almost primarily an aesthetic thing. He absolutely denies that he's moving stuff between his various properties and hiding it. We want to make sure that the stuff gets brought to the appropriate disposal site, or if it's the Haitians or the Nigerians, if they can still recycle it, let's, you know, get it on a boat, but those markets are slow, you know, sometimes those guys that leave stuff at Jeff's yard and say they're going to come get it, don't always come through, you know, but that's where we are.
So, it sounds like what you're saying, even March is premature. And I know Kurt, you stated on several occasions that one of your biggest concerns is time limit.
I mean, there's just got to be some, there's, that's what I'm struggling with, there's, I am completely sympathetic to how difficult it is to do this, but in fairness to everybody, you got to kind of meet us in the middle too, you know, you got to give us some kind of a timeframe here that we can get this stuff to a point where you can apply for your site plan. That's all, we're asking for some time, something that we can work with.
Does the condition actually impact the timing to apply for site plan? Does it matter?
No, I would think that is based more on...
I'm wondering why hasn't that happened already?
Yeah, yeah.
Why hasn't he...
Applied for site plan, I think we talked about that happening by December.
No, I understand, he, there are some financial aspects to this as well. You know, Bay Colony is highly regarded, not inexpensive, you know, retaining them took a commitment. Thinking about what the ultimate use of the site is an ongoing process, you know, so admittedly, we wish we were further along in that process, but that is where we are. You know, it's, I would think and would propose that the best thing to do would be to perhaps have Scott Shippey and Matt Brennan take another site walk each month, have your board come out in March, and then you can make a determination at your March meeting and see whether, you know, what are we going to do, are we going to go to court or whatever, but see if additional progress has been made. I just think it's the best way to skin this cat.
Do you think you'd have more information about the status of site and the site plan process at that point?
Yeah, we can, yep, yep. I'm sure by then I can get some scheduling information from Bill Buckley and Rich Leslie and find out what the plan is there.
I think it's, you know, it's unreasonable for us to give you unreasonable deadlines, but it's also unreasonable for you to give us no deadlines, you know?
Are you in a position where you know when you can get it done by?
No. No, alls I can do is do the best I can every day, and I know what my goal is, I get my goals done, and simple as that.
The problem is, if we propose a deadline, it's going to have to be, from our perspective, a conservative deadline. I think keeping an eye on the process is probably the best way to go, but, you know, I have no idea, I'm a layperson, I don't move heavy equipment, you know?
Yeah, and like I said, the last question I have is, again, back to my first question, what is it that we're trying to get that site to look like so that everyone's happy? That's what I'm struggling with here. Like, do you have to take like 10 more trucks off or 20 more trucks? I mean, you know, what are we trying to get?
You know, I think, and this is going to sound kind of stupid, you know, seeing is going to be believing.
Yeah, I know, I know what you mean.
I mean, granted, it's between pastoral and what there is right now.
Yeah, and Jeff, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, like, I'm real, I'm just trying to understand, you know, like, I don't...
So, let's say the thought would be to remove anything that clearly is never going to move again.
Okay.
Okay? Remove stockpiles of things that cannot legitimately be used to repair other vehicles.
Okay.
That is going to be something that I think we're going to have to rely on Jeff, but, you know, meeting the property, organize the property, there's still going to be a considerable amount of material on that site when he files and when he receives his site plan.
And that's exactly what I mean, like, what are we trying to get, what are we trying to get you to make the site look like, is what I'm saying, you know?
Well, I mean, they're talking about all of the aspects of site plan review, how do, you know, how do you grade it, do you fill it, do you level it, buffering, all of that, you know, parking places, but the goal would be, there'd be probably a lot of trailers and a lot of tractors parked there, forklifts, loaders, excavators, things like that. You know, I think the dividing line would be that these are operating machines and the necessary tools, equipment and supplies to repair those operating machines, and not, you know, random piles of, you know, questionable stuff.
But even materials that are used in the business shouldn't be strewn around the property. I mean, there were tons of tires, and Jeff, I think you had indicated that some of them would, are still being used by you, depending on the client and the client's needs. They shouldn't be just strewn across the property, there would be a, I'm not going to suggest what the way is, but some way to store them so it doesn't look like a mess, whether it's, you know, building a shed, whether it's expanding the building, whether it's just finding an area where you would be stacking them, as opposed to here, there, and everywhere.
And some of those things can be stored inside trailers and containers.
Yeah, optics.
No, I get it, but so far, he's been trying to work on the substance and not... But so far, he's been trying to work on the substance and not pretty it up. It's... And it's not pretty. But, you know, the concept of organizing it, stowing stuff, getting rid of as many unusable tires as he can, et cetera, you know, he's working on that. It's just an arduous process.
So the focus is going to be on getting rid of, like you said, the odd junk, stuff that's never going to work again, that kind of thing?
Yes. And in addition to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, some of it is returning things to their owners. Some of it is conceivably moving whatever that export thing is, if any of that is going on, you know?
And just out of curiosity, when you say returning it to the owners, like, if someone's truck breaks down and they leave it there, do they... Sometimes... I'm just asking a question because I don't know. Do they just, like, leave it and not pick it up or something like that? Or do you hold it till they pay you or something?
I think it's more the export-type stuff. Those guys will drop stuff for an extended period of time, and the answer is, you know, the port is closed or that business isn't economic anymore or whatever. But, you know, he's got to get...
So it's not like someone breaks down the highway and they leave their truck there and they just don't pick it up or something? It's not that?
I don't think that's the case. No, those trucks, you know, they have to get repaired quickly and get back on the road.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Now, but there are some of the trucks that are going to be pretty tough to get running again, and those are probably the ones we want to see somewhere else.
Yeah, part of the dilemma is we really, you know, need to have the site plan process go through so we know exactly what's going to be there, and then we can make some further decisions, you know, in that regard. I know that Buckley is busy. I mean, he's told me that himself with respect to some other matters. But as somebody said earlier, we had requested, required that there be a filing by December, by our December meeting. So here we are, and, you know, a month later, and same thing.
It is what it is. I mean, I'm sorry.
You know, I can't obviously force Buckley to drop everything, but if we continue to march, I would really like to see at least, at the very least, a site plan that you're ready to file with the planning board. And again, I can't dictate when the planning board's going to hear it, although I know Diana will push it. But at the very least, a site plan that is ready to be submitted to the planning board. Come March, we're going to have to make another decision, how much more time. Let's assume we're satisfied there's been progress.
Well, we're just... We're asking for a good faith effort. It's hard making everyone in town happy.
That's why you get the big bucks.
Yeah.
Kim?
All right, so what we are saying, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, is that for March, we're looking for a good faith effort. And part of that, that would be lovely, but partially out of the applicant's control... Well, not the applicant, is the... Bill Buckley, see what he can do. I understand that's not entirely within your control. And do we have any other specifications that we would like to ask for? We would like some more... You know, I appreciate the list that we just got now. That was great, since one for this list.
I mean, is it reasonable to focus on what's, like, the junk getting removed? Is that what you're saying? Like, to do that?
Well, I guess... I definitely agree with what Attorney Lovely is saying, is that we don't really know. We've never... I mean, I've never cleaned up something like this, right? None of us ever have before, so I would assume there's a bit of... Sometimes things are going to look a certain way before they look better, because we don't understand what it's like to do that. So, you know, would we want to have lists just so we can understand what things were, you know, taken away? So another list like this would be great.
Certainly, a good faith effort would be, say, a month from now, and then in March, another list of that nature.
Okay, great.
It'd be 30 days or something like that, you know?
So by our next meeting, would we ask that this be turned in to us?
We may not, if we're lucky, have a meeting in February, but by that date...
That's true, but to the building commissioner?
Yeah.
So a list like this to the building commissioner by, is it February 15th if we were to have a meeting? But maybe we don't have to, fingers crossed, knock on wood.
Yeah, February 15th.
So maybe a list like this by February 15th to the building commissioner, and then by our meeting in March, another list like this? That would be great. And asking for Mr. Shippey to go out at some...
Do a site walk, yeah.
At some point? And then how about, are we going to be interested in doing?
Yes.
In March?
In doing... Okay, and so given that we're not sure we're going to be here in February, should we set that now, or do we want to organize that through Diana?
Well, the March meeting is not until March 21st, so if you want to do early in March, I mean, we don't know what the winter's going to bring, but we could...
Well, we could either say pristine snow... Snowscape or snow on a lot of items.
Or tulips.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly pick a date in March to do a site walk if that's convenient.
Yeah.
Sure. Like, the first week of March is the 4th through the 8th, and the next week's the 11th through the 15th, and then you get the week of the meeting.
Obviously, the 11th through the 15th, that week.
I'm not available on the 14th and 15th, so 11th, 12th, or 13th is fine with me.
Jeff, do you have trials come up in that March, or you...
I certainly hope not. I can make those dates.
Any of those are good for me.
Monday morning, the 11th, is not good for me, but otherwise, I could make it work.
Last one, you did on, like, a Tuesday at 11:00, so do you want to do the 12th at 11:00?
That sounds good to me.
Weather permitting?
Eric, that good for you?
I can do that, the 12th at 11:00 a.m.
Jeff, if you could also let Scott know by mid-February, the same time as you provide him the list of items that have been removed, where the site plan process is.
Okay.
And if you could push Bill. I think our audience has left.
Yeah. By March, hopefully, we'll be done with the MBTA community stuff in planning, so...
Anything else we want to require?
Okay, so what we're talking about is a good faith effort, a list by 215, a list by 321, the site walk on March 12th. What am I missing?
The site plan.
Oh, yes.
I mean, to my mind, the good faith effort is items being removed. You know, again, there are a lot of tires there. If you can put some of them inside, if you can move them and stack them in a reasonable location as opposed to being strewn all over the place. That shows at least some progress being made, you know, towards what we're looking for. So... And the good faith effort would be, obviously, to, again, it's not totally in your control, but if you can just, you know, keep pushing Buckley to...
Sure.
So at a planning board meeting last month that I was at, and Jeff had a matter, and I made the comment that planning board treats them a lot nicer than we do. So, I don't know.
Not always.
All right, so motion to continue to March 21?
So moved.
Jeff, I'll probably send you another continuance form.
Okay, sure. Yep.
So moved, so Kim?
Yes.
Rain?
Yes.
And Barney Ross?
Thank you.
Minutes?
Minutes. I sent them out late this afternoon, terribly sorry, but people keep coming and talking to me.
Guilty.
Any questions, comments?
Nope.
No, they look good, thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, all of us on this. So Kim?
Yes.
Rain?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Any other business?
No, nothing new, deadlines, next Friday, I think.
Yeah, now, there's one matter that...
I've heard about, that hopefully doesn't show up next month.
Well, I'm not sure what the specifics of it are, but there's a blue house that's on South Street. They want to expand it, and some zoning relief is going to be necessary.
The one right down here at the corner?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, by understanding, Gabby Jordan, Kevin Weinfeld, and Frank met yesterday on it. Frank has, I think, previously discussed the matter with Scott.
Does Kevin own the building?
I'm sorry?
Does Kevin own the building?
No, he's on... Ultimately, they'll need a special permit from planning board.
Oh, right, okay, okay.
So I gather what transpired was that Frank wants to meet with me and with Scott to talk about the zoning issues. Probably the earliest I can meet would be like Wednesday or Thursday, which means it won't be in by Friday, probably, so ideally, we won't have it in Feb... We won't have that one in February, it'll be not be until March. And nothing else is...
No, unless another random home occupation shows up, but...
When I spoke with Scott before he went on vacation, he said he had nothing that was other than this that was on his agenda, so...
Okay.
So maybe, even though I won't be here, maybe none of us will be.
What's the deadline for submitting for...
Next Friday.
Friday?
Yeah. A week from tomorrow.
And I think the very earliest I could possibly meet with Frank and Scott, and I don't know what their schedules are, would be Wednesday afternoon, so...
I think Scott, I know Scott's coming back.
Monday, I think.
Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday. And he's going to be busy the first couple of days, just catching up, so... So hopefully, February will be off. And then we'll get bombed again. Anything else?
Nope.
So motion to adjourn?
And we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Rain?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
So we'll see you whenever. Take care. Well, thank you.